Given prior notice that he won't be in attendance, I don't think trustee Takaoka is here either. Okay, trustees Cook?
Here.
Horser?
Here.
Markport?
Here.
Schenk?
Here.
Oppenheim?
Here.
Is there a motion to nominate a chairman pro tem for this evening's meeting?
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be the chairman pro tem for the meeting.
I will second it.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Markport?
Aye.
Horser?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Schenk?
Aye.
Great motion, right. All right, we have a court in the meeting, it's called to order. Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice and every law.
Okay, first item, do we have any citizens wishing to address the board on something other than what's on the agenda? Come on.
Hello, so my name is Brianna Asho and I'm your Miss Vernon Hills 2021. In a few weeks, my junior Miss Vernon Hills and my little Miss Vernon Hills will be here helping to introduce the new 2022 Vernon Hills Queens. However, I will unfortunately be out of town at that time. So I just wanted to take this opportunity during this meeting to thank you all as the board for your support throughout the last, throughout the last year and throughout the past years for helping this pageant run so smoothly and allowing it to continue on for the pa- for the past years and for allowing it to continue so that other girls can have the same amazing experiences that I have this year. I also wanted to take the time while I'm here to thank you all for the support of the LGBT community this month by hanging the pride flag throughout the village. As an openly LGBT member, um, woman, I just being able to see the flag hung in my town just made me really happy and felt really supported by just living here and being able to see that I was supported where I live. So just thank you again for everything that you're doing and it, I just feel really proud to be living here, so thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate everything you've done for us this year, you know, representing the village, so you've done a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other citizens? Oh, yes. And if you could sign in after you, go ahead and make your comments.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Julie Simpson. Um, it was about almost exactly a year ago that I was here and I came and I said, you know, we're already into June, um, so I'm not really expecting to see something right now, but if, you know, we're not starting to recognize pride as a community and that you guys are going to see me all the time. Well, I don't think I've been here since then. And so I just really want to say thank you to you guys because, I mean, I think what you did was amazing. I mean, I know that there were, um, residents who worked with you guys and I kept in touch with Kathy all along the way. But it was really nice to just see everything, you know, come together and not have to like put my nose into it and be involved and just kind of watch it and, you know, everything I've heard from the community has been super, super positive, so I just think that you guys all did a great job. I know it was a lot of work overall, but I think that it was easy and collaborative and just thank you guys so much. I'm very proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
And thanks to Dave's great crew at Public Works, you know, making sure the banners are all hung and ordered and properly and everything.
And the, and the, the high school kids who put it together.
Yeah.
Who did a much better job than my design, so we appreciate them too.
Any other citizens wishing to address the board? If not, then under the village president's report, we have a couple of proclamations. First proclamation is in recognition of service James Parsons, Vernon Hills Police Department. James Parsons began his employment as a telecommunicator with the Lincolnshire Police Department in 1995 and served in that capacity until 2013. James then became a telecommunicator with the Vernon Hills Police Department and served faithfully until his retirement on June 3rd, 2022. James provided emergency dispatch services for the residents of Vernon Hills, Libertyville, and Lincolnshire during his career. James dispatched countless calls for service and was a calming voice for public in times of great stress. James earned a commendation while serving the village of Lincolnshire for his quick thinking and determination. James's efforts led to the identification and arrest of a serial offender abusing the 911 system to make threats to public officials. The residents of the village of Vernon Hills, as well as the village of Libertyville and Lincolnshire, have been greatly rewarded by James's service to the community as a police telecommunicator. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the president and the board of trustees of the village of Vernon Hills, on behalf of the entire Vernon Hills community, extend to James Parsons their gratitude and thanks for his many years of service to the village. He wasn't able to make it tonight, correct?
Correct, Mr. President. I just wanted you to know, we did celebrate, uh, James', uh, uh, career Friday. We had, uh, we had cake, we presented him with a reading of that proclamation and, uh, him and his wife, I think, are already starting their retirement, so he couldn't make it tonight, but he certainly appreciates uh, the support of the board and the community and, um, we certainly appreciate his service because, uh, he and the other telecommunications are as essential to the community's public safety as every, uh, police officer you see here tonight.
Well, it's a job, it's a job, as we've talked before, it's a job that not a lot of people can do. It's a, it's, uh, it takes a special kind of person to do that job. Um, like I said, my sister did it for a number of years and, um, and it just, it, you know, some of the stories I heard and the ability to stay calm in that kind of a situation is often, you know, it amazes me.
And, and I described Jim as unflappable. That was one of the comments I made on Friday.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, second proclamation is in recognition of Lawrence, but I'm going to call him Larry. La Luzern. Larry La Luzern was appointed as a member of the Village of Vernon Hills Fire and Police Commission by President Byrne in 1997 and served in that capacity until his retirement from the board in 2022. Larry faithfully served the United States as a member of the Air Force's Judge Advocate General Corps before transitioning to a law career in Lake County. His extensive experience and dedication led him to represent numerous Lake County communities as a municipal prosecutor, where he tried hundreds of DUI cases to verdict and argued before the Illinois State Supreme Court. Larry's legal perspective and intuition were invaluable in the operation of the commission. During his tenure, he participated in the process of hiring nearly every sworn member of the police department and promoted all of the current command staff. Larry served the, on the village's traffic advisory committee since 1993, providing resident input on matters of traffic regulation and safety. The residents of the village of Vernon Hills have been greatly rewarded by Larry's service to the community as a member of the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners and the Traffic Advisory Committee during the past 29 years. Now therefore be proclaimed that the president and board of trustees of the village of Vernon Hills, on behalf of the entire Vernon Hills community, extend to Larry La Luzern their gratitude and thanks for his many years of service to the village. Thank you, Larry.
Thank, thank you, and before I give the, the mic over to Larry, I just want to make a short presentation. I think he's going to call some other police officers up here, but, but Larry, on behalf of, uh, the men and women of the police department who you've served so admirably, um, we present you this signed, uh, uh, signature patch, signed by all members of, uh, the police department. As you said, uh, Larry had something to do with the hiring or promotion of each and every, probably each and every one of his signatures from 25 years, a long time, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Um, you and I were the first members of the Traffic Advisory Commission back in 1993 and you went on to different things, uh, as we know, and thank you for all your time on the board. Probably one of your worst nightmares is to have, uh, an attorney with a mic. But I, I do want to say a couple of things.
We try not to let him speak very well.
I, uh, I appreciate the opportunity that President Byrne gave me 25 years ago. Uh, I have a great affinity for police and, and police officers' work. Proud of a couple of things. Over the past 25 years, uh, we've had incredible stability on the Fire and Police Commission. We've only had six different commissioners, including myself, over that time, and that's, that's a real tribute to the dedication of the other commissioners that have served since Dick Powers, Nanny Moscow, Rich Sorrello, uh, Tom Coyle, now Ramesh Kerepari. The other thing, I think the chief lack of this, um, nobody that's been hired as a Vernon Hills police officer has ever left this department for a better job in law enforcement. It's, it's just a fantastic department and, you know, I'm proud to have played a little bit of, of role in that. But, uh, we, we have a tremendous department, we have support of the board, we have the support of the community, and in these times, that's not a small achievement. As Chief said, I've been involved in hiring all but one of the current police officers on the Vernon Hills staff. And the first one is here tonight, Rebecca Foye, please step forward. Because this is my all-time favorite story, if you just indulge me for a couple of minutes. Uh, when, when Andy and I got appointed by Mayor Byrne back in 1997, we were kind of behind the eight ball getting some officers hired, so we had to get into high gear to get a promotion or an eligibility list together. So we put out a testing, we had about 200 or so applicants applied, uh, and Becky ended up getting first on the test. Number one score on the test. And that was including officers from other departments who were testing to try to join us. Well, after we did the test, after about 80 so people passed the test, they had to do a physical agility test in which they had to demonstrate their ability to do certain activities which police officers would be required to do, and Becky was right up there with all these other candidates, she was right up there. And then we had to do interviews and, uh, as a chief and Lynn, I, I should recognize her for all the help that you've done for our commission over the years, I appreciate that. Even after you weren't getting paid by the village, you came back and, uh, we appreciate that. But anyway, so we had to do interviews and there were weeks and weeks of interviews. And Becky happened to be the last interview and it was a cold December night. And Becky walks into the interview room and she's dressed in a business suit and her hair is up, she's got a little portfolio and she sits down at the table and she opens it up and she scribbles a couple of notes to herself. We go through the interview and she just kills it. She just nails it. And so we're talking to her, she says, yeah, I grew up in Vernon Hills and, and I'm a senior at Western Illinois. And we're like, wow, I mean, we were interviewing officers from other departments that didn't interview nearly as well as Becky did. And she said, in fact, I gotta go back tomorrow in the middle of finals, I gotta finish my test and then, you know, and hopefully I'll be graduating. So Becky leaves and we, we scored the test and we knew ultimately she was being the number one candidate on the list. So she literally lived down the street from here. We said, you know, this poor girl is in the middle of tests, she's probably nervous, it's her first interview, and she's going to have a job. So we drove to her house because we just did the interviews at the old village hall. Andy and Dick, myself, we drove to the house, knocked on the door, Becky comes to the door, hairs down, sweats on. She's a college kid all over again. And we said, make sure you do well in your finals, but don't worry, you've got a job. And the smile on her face was priceless. And I remember that for the last 25 years. I've, I've had the pleasure of watching you grow as a police officer. Uh, I watched her get married, have kids, she's moved into our neighborhood, she's a neighbor, we see you at the mall, at Target, at Summer Celebration, at the Fourth of July Parade, uh, and now a recent commander promotion. You have validated our decision 25 years ago, I appreciate it. Thank you for your service, Becky.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you indulge us, can we get a picture with Larry up here?
Oh, absolutely.
Great.
And Larry, thank you so much for your, all your service to the village. It's been greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, Larry. Don't leave without this. Next would be Assistant Village Manager, Village Event Schedule?
Thank you and good evening. As we conclude this beautiful June day, staff is excited to remind the board and community, event season is beginning, starting this week. Leading off, the Vernon Hills Pageant, which is scheduled for Saturday, June 11th at 1:00 PM at the Park District Sullivan Center. We're excited for all the contestants and hope everyone, along with the newly crowned little miss, junior miss, and Miss Vernon Hills will be able to join us here at the June 21st board meeting for introductions. On Wednesday, June 15th, Arbor, Arbor Theater Concert Season begins. And if you haven't seen, uh, the Arbor Theater and all the work that, uh, the Public Works has done to make it beautiful, uh, come by and visit. The first band, Good Clean Fun, will be starting off the 2022 concert season. This year features seven concerts. Entertainment is on Wednesdays and some Thursdays from June 15th through August 4th at the Arbor Theater. Events are free to attend and as a reminder, if there is inclement weather, entertainment is moved to the Sullivan Center. For the entire 2022 entertainment lineup, please visit the village website for more information. July 4th Parade, we are back and we're excited to again be conducting the parade. The route will be the traditional route from Deer Path South to Sullivan, Sullivan to Aspen, and Aspen North to the Sullivan Center. Parade starts at 9:00 AM and we're looking forward to seeing everyone in the community and hopeful for sunshine, great fun, and many smiles. July 4th Fireworks, excited to partner with the Vernon Hills Park District for one of the best shows in Lake County. It's at Beautiful Century Park and as everyone knows, the Park District sponsors the band Big Fun Band, which starts at 7:00 PM. And trustee Cook will be up on stage to help, uh, introduce the queens with, uh, Park District President Dave Duerhofer, and then we'll do the countdown. Fireworks are scheduled to launch at 9:30 PM. Vernon Hills Days, the rebranded Summer Celebration event is going nostalgic by returning to its original name and community branding. Hosted at Beautiful Century Park, this event is scheduled for July 14th to the 17th. The event will include the traditional entertainment of rides, food, beer tent, and fireworks. Great musical acts to include Hi-Fi Superstar, Jefferson Starship, Mike and Joe, and Brett Scallions, singer from Puel. And on Sunday, the Park District will be hosting a new Wine and Tasting Craft Event. And mark your calendars for August 19th and 20th as we give a plug to the Park District for hosting Vernon Hills Ribfest at Century Park. The village of Vernon Hills is proud to sponsor the Friday entertainment for this event, which will be the Blues Brothers. After a couple of years of not hosting major events, village staff is very excited for the upcoming 2022 event season and we hope the community is as well. We'll see everybody at these events starting this week.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully we'll have good weather for all those outdoor events. Next item would be Chief of Police?
Thank you. Um, yes, I, Mr. President, I thought it was just probably a timely opportunity to provide the board and the community at large. Just a little bit of an update, uh, I, I don't blame anyone if there's some questions in their heads regarding perhaps police procedures in response to violent events. This has been very newsworthy in the last couple of weeks. And I just wanted to come to the board, bring, uh, some command staff and our officers that are working tonight, just to give a little bit of an update and, and frankly, a little bit of an assurance of how we are prepared to keep this community safe if, God forbid, evil visits us. And unfortunately, it's something that we have to spend considerable time and effort doing because, um, you know, the, these, these type of events can happen anywhere. And I'm not going to comment on any particular, uh, uh, event because I don't know all the facts, but I know I've been troubled by some of the things I've heard reported and, um, I, I want to share with you a few things. First and foremost, we work very closely with schools, churches, uh, our sister departments, Fire Department, the neighboring police departments, to build very strong partnerships. We train with them. In fact, we did a very large, uh, in fact, Commander Foy was the lead planner um, on a very large tabletop exercise, was that in April? Yeah, mid-April with, um, uh, all of the school administration, all of our staff, our SROs, our Fire Department, really exercising through plans, um, testing them. We do regular law enforcement drills. We have another one of those, uh, large-scale, um, tabletop exercises with another one of the school districts here set up before school resumes. These are regular ongoing things that we do to prepare along with the safety drills. I won't discuss specific, uh, security measures in, in place, but I will tell you this, that when I came to town five years ago from another jurisdiction, I immediately called them. One of the first things I did in my first month here was I invited them to come see the measures that Vernon Hills Schools had invested in to make our, uh, students safer. But that's how impressed I was, uh, with the measures that are in place, and they've only gotten better. So I, I really feel we've done a good job there, uh, working with the schools, helping advise them, making sure the investment is right in those security systems. Uh, we train regularly. When I say regularly, a week before last, when some of these high-profile incidents were happening, uh, we had every member of our department in full day at the American Hotel Registry Building, which is not being used right now. The owners were gracious enough to let us use it for a couple of full days of training, but that training was in the works for months beforehand. And our instructors were, uh, preparing that training, exercising our officers. I can tell you, I was there, I observed it. This is training that I've been actively involved in, uh, for many, many, many years. And I can tell you, these officers are ready. And not only are they ready, trained, they have the right equipment. They have the right mindset. They are not asking for permission. They are not looking for me to authorize them to go save lives. If bad things happen in this community, these police officers will go, uh, wherever they need to, take whatever they, risk they need to, um, to put down that threat. And, um, that is, uh, baseline what we owe you and, uh, you probably don't hear it often enough, but I think given the high-profile questions, uh, that have happened in recent weeks, um, it, it's appropriate to come reassure the community that uh, we stand ready for that and we pray every day we don't have to, to use those, uh, those measures. So with that, I'll address any, any questions if the board might have and, and otherwise we can move on.
Are there any questions from the board? Trustee Schenk?
Well, I just want to make sure, because I don't think you guys hear it enough, but thank you for keeping our community as safe as it can be. So we really do appreciate it. Thank you.
And, and to that point, I got to tell you, we hear it a lot, right? I mean, we, we are so blessed to work in a community where we feel so supported. Uh, throughout the community, we get a lot of thanks, a lot of, um, pats on the back, and it's wonderful. It's, it's great to have that partnership we have with the community. So thank you, but we, we do hear it a lot.
Trustee Markport?
I've lived in this village 42 years, approaching 43, 43 years. And we have an outstanding, we have an unbelievable police force that, uh, you are very well-loved from all of us in this community. And, uh, I thank you and I enjoy living in this town and I know I'm protected by each and every one of you.
And, and I can, you know, have, uh, numerous firsthand experiences with some of the drills and training that we've had at the school, having taught there for as many years, uh, including some actual onsite stuff with, with the officers and that, and, uh, it's, it's always been constantly evolving, constantly being reevaluated, making sure we're doing what's, you know, we know is to be the best thing right now. And instead of just standing pat and saying, well, we already know how to do it, the, the thing I'm impressed with the most is the retraining and the relearning and the relooking at it to make sure there's nothing we've missed, so, um, excellent job on that. Anybody else? Okay. Then in that case, um, uh, next item then would be the omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through K?
Motion to approve.
Second. We got a, a motion and a second. Um, one question, item, I just had a question regarding item E for council. That ability to assign and move it leaves no, there is absolutely no, um,
There, there's no further.
Vulnerability or anything for the village?
No, no further obligations. This is just an assignment to their mortgage holder, JP Morgan Chase, uh, as collateral.
Okay.
As they continue to construct and, and build the project. Really, uh, something that, uh, provides, again, no, no further obligations.
No exposure whatsoever.
Or exposure, not at all.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other questions or concerns about anything on the? Okay, then hearing none, a roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Markport?
Aye.
Horser?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye. And Craig, turn it on, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Takaoka?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, um, no unfinished additional business?
Correct, and we will not be needing a closed session either this evening.
And no closed session and no new business. Anybody have any communications to share?
I'd like to say something.
Trustee Takaoka?
I'm sure everyone has heard about, you know, the tragedy that occurred this Memorial Day weekend. I mean, besides the obvious, I mean, I, I'm a parent of four children, I mean, that's unimaginable, right? I mean, it's, we were in Italy at the time and got bored at 2:30 in the morning. Thing is that, you know, it hits, it hits a little closer to home for me because he was, uh, he was, he was in a group of kids with my son. They're all very good friends. There's like 10 of them. Kid was at my house at least twice a week, saw him all the time. Just a good kid, good student, as, you know, everyone in this community would attest to. And this is a great community, you know. We're so very fortunate to have someone like Dr. Gilliam at our high school. It's just, I mean, it's unbelievable, you know, the, you know, what he does as soon as the word got out, getting with the kids, sending counselors to a kid's house where people, where kids congregated and he was there. You know, Dr. Gilliam is just, I mean, it's just, in situations like this, it's just, you know, that's, we're fortunate. He's one in a million. Jeff Fuhreru at the Park District, he's been, people have been reaching out to him because there's a lot of kids that want to do a memorial, plant a tree. Um, I talked to Jeff and he's like, whatever they want to do. Kids want to put a memorial at a plaque at a skateboard park. My son's group, a kid, you know, their group, you know, the irony is they were at Lake Charles, you know, the, before that weekend because, you know, my son's a year younger, they're graduating, going off to college and they congregate there and just, you know, sort of, you know, the night before they went off to the weekend and then the, then this tragedy happens. And, you know, he was a single, he was a, he was the only child. I mean, I have four children, but he was the only child. I mean, again, I can't, it doesn't make it, I don't, I don't, it doesn't make it worse, but just, I couldn't imagine anything like this happening, you know, to anyone here who has children, and a lot of you do. But what really kills me is that, you know, he was going to college with my, same college as my daughter, who's going to be a sophomore. And right before we left, left for vacation, he would say, Craig, Mr. T, Mr. Takaoka, I can't wait to see you down at the zoo when you come down and visit Cindy. And it's just like, you know, and it's, it breaks my heart. I have, it's just killed me. And, uh, but again, this community has reached out, um, unbelievably. I mean, it's just, he was a well-liked kid, good student, played sports, and it's just, it's just so horrible. So I just, you know, the Jablonsky family, I know some of you know who they are, just, you know. you know, keep them in your prayers, there's a wake on Thursday and the funeral's on Friday, but I just wanted to.
Yeah, I did, I second your thoughts, Adam was an amazing kid. Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Amazing young man.
So, yep, that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Any other new business or communication? Okay, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn the board meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, back to you.
Okay, I'd like to call the June 7, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Forcer.
Here.
Oppenheim.
Here.
Markwart.
Here.
Takaoka.
Here.
Schenck.
Here.
Is there a motion to appoint a temporary chair for this evening's meeting?
I'd like to appoint Trustee Cook to be the temporary president or chair for this meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Forcer.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Markwart.
Aye.
Schenck.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Motion carries. First item is approval of the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of May 17, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forcer.
Aye.
Markwart.
Aye.
Schenck.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item of business is consideration of the report and recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval of an amendment to the special use permit allowing landscape buffer along variation, along variation along with site plan, landscape plan, and architectural revisions, allowing a third drive-through lane on property located at 221 East Townline Road.
Thank you, and if it's okay with the board, I'd like to, you know, first quickly review the site plan and the landscape plan for you, then summarize the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, and then pass it over to representatives of Portillo's who can answer any questions that you might have. On the screen in front of you is the site plan. I think as the board is aware, the current configuration is two lanes entering on the north, and then as you traverse to the west, it converges to one lane, and then you pick up on the south side of the building. This proposal would add three lanes that would be around all three sides of the building. It would result in a 17.5-foot setback to the west property line, and that would be measured to what would be the new property line as the village is acquiring eight and a half feet of land dedication to support a road widening project. On the north, it would result in a 43.7-foot setback. In both cases, a 50-foot landscape buffer is required. I'd also note that there's a retaining wall around the north and most of the west lanes. That retaining wall varies in height anywhere between 30 and 48 inches, depending on where you are. And that, and along with the enhanced landscaping on top of the existing berm, helps visually screen the drive-through from Lakeview Parkway. I'll also note that the garbage enclosure, you see it on the lower left-hand part of your screen, is being relocated south, and again, that's to make room for the three lanes. This next screen shows the tree protection plan and the tree removal plan. I would note that the six trees all the way to the left of your screen, their mark is remaining, but the fact is they'll be removed as part of our roadway widening project. Otherwise, the landscaping that's shown for removal is accurate as shown on this plan. The next screen shows the enhanced landscaping, and you can see along the north and west property lines where those are located, in the boulder lines. Also note that landscaping, new landscaping will be provided on the west side of the relocated garbage enclosure. Currently, we don't have landscaping screening the existing enclosure. And this just gives you an overall aerial view of the intersection and of the proposed work that's before you tonight. So the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on June 1 to consider this request. And regarding the special use permit, the Planning and Zoning Commission voiced concern over the need of a third drive-through lane. They stated that queuing onto the target property does not occur on a regular basis, while other commission members did support, did voice support for the amended special use permit as proposed. Regarding the site plan, the commission members were generally supportive of the plan as presented. Regarding the landscape plan, some of the commission members commented that the reduced landscape buffer depth would not adequately screen the drive-through lane along Lakeview Parkway, while other commission members felt that the screening would be adequate. And then finally, regarding the architectural plans for the relocated garbage enclosure, the commission was generally supportive of that design as presented. So on a motion to approve preliminary and final amendment to the special use permit allowing a third drive-through lane, the motion to approve this failed with a vote of three in favor and three against. Secondly, on a motion to approve preliminary and final site plan, landscape plan, and architectural plan approvals, that motion failed also with three in favor and three opposed. So with that, I can pass it over to representatives of Portillo's who can answer any questions that you might have. I would also add that at the, at the end of your deliberations, staff would be looking for one of two things. If you feel that the, if the board feel, if the cow feels that the proposal is appropriate and believes that should be approved, then staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance approving the project. Conversely, if the board feels that the proposal is not appropriate, then staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance denying the request as presented to you tonight. And again, I can pass it along to representatives of Portillo's who can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. So with respect to the one concern that Mike brought up about why do you need a third driveline, so I wanted to describe a little bit about how we got to the position where we thought a third driveline might be useful. So Portillo's is now built.
Introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. Preston Funkhauser, Vice President of Construction and Facilities for Portillo's Hot Dogs, and also Aaron Bruder with Cage Engineering, our civil engineer. Thank you. So we, Portillo's built our first three-lane drive-through in West Madison, Wisconsin back in the fall, and then we built a second three-lane drive-through with actually pickup only with no dining room in Joliet, Illinois, that we opened up in February of this year. And we're about to start construction in two weeks in Sherrville, Indiana, on a third-lane drive-through. And the purpose of that third-lane drive-through is, results of what we learned during the pandemic over the last two years, a lot of the guests have decided that they would prefer to either order with an app, order online, pick up to go, or have third-party delivery bring it to them. So the incentive of the third lane is mostly an OLO lane, so an online ordering lane, where you would come, that's where your Uber Eats, your DoorDash, your Grubhub, all of those types of third-party delivery services would come straight through, would unencumbered by guests like myself, who went through the drive-through today to get a couple of those new garden dogs. The first two lanes, as you notice, and most of you have probably been to a Portillo's, the first lane is the primary lane, we use the second as a stacking queue if we need it, and then we pretty quickly merge you back after you talk to the order takers. The third lane would be pretty much exclusively used for online ordering and that third-party delivery. So that's the why. And I know there's some concerns, you know, I was there for the first time myself tonight. I acknowledge that there's a quarter of a mile of asphalt before you get to our drive-through, so stacking is probably not a problem there, and queuing is probably not a problem, as the Planning and Zoning Commission noticed.
Well, when was the last time you used the second lane now?
At this particular site?
Yeah, I haven't seen you use it, and I frequent your place, I'll say that upfront.
Thank you, sir.
In fact, I could give you my wife's order off the top of my head, I've made it so many times, but it's been a long time since I've even seen you use the second lane there.
Yes, sir. I, I'm not personally from this area, but I suspect that over the last two years, that's absolutely true in most Portillo's. However, just like the village of Vernon Hills, we're planning for the future, where we expect folks to start coming back out into the public, supposed to come back to restaurants, eating out more often, probably not something you're going to see over the next six months based on where we're headed to, possibly a recession, you know, there's less disposable income right now, and there's been a less proclivity to go out and eat out. So that's probably very true over the past two years. We think, however, that places like this area are going to grow, there's going to be more multifamily housing, there's going to be more population coming in. We think that we're planning for the future and to have the ability to grow with the community, and that's the reason why we think this is a good idea. Great question, sir.
Comments or concerns from the board? Trustee Markwart?
I was talking, and I'm taking a look because of the setback, you're 15 feet, or excuse me, 17.5. I know, and talked with Michael, across the street, it's basically a 25-foot setback, if I'm correct. So when I look at this, it's, you look at moving closer out, there's no resident, of course, that's to the west. So I'm sort of torn, actually in between, to the point that it came out to a split for the P and Z. So it's like, is it, is it worth doing it, or is it not worth doing it? And I understand by the future, if things are changing, so those are my thoughts out of it. I have to admit, I'm probably more in favor of allowing for a third lane due to the fact that some of the things that stand in point, you are probably one of the best restaurants technically in this village. So you've been close to the community for doing things, so those are favors for me, so that's what I need to say.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Can you talk a little bit about how you're going to handle the throughput with all three lanes? Where are your employees actually going to stand? Where's the food going to be delivered to them, actually handed to them?
Absolutely, thank you. So very similar to the way you see it now, we'll have order takers out by the pre-sale board typically, just like this evening, there were two young men standing out there. We had, we had a slow night this evening, so there were cones directing you just into the single lane. If, if we start seeing stacking and queuing and we need to get more throughput in the driveline, they'll move those cones out, and then we'll direct traffic to start stacking in that, in that second lane. And then you'll pick up the food the same place you did before. As you get closer to the pickup window, runners will begin bringing food out. In a, in a situation where all, both two lanes are full and the OLO lane is being activated, we would deploy more individuals to the outside, more order takers and more runners to bring food out to keep that third lane flowing through.
So how are you going to ensure the safety of these runners when they're traversing three lanes to get to, to the cars?
Very good question. So we've got the striped, we've got the striping in the center there, and we've also got cones, and then they've got high-visibility vests, and we're, we've been practicing this and executing this since November up in Madison, Wisconsin, with no injuries, no incidents. The guests that are coming to us in the drive-through, they're obviously not going through residential, or they're not going through cross-street speeds, they're entering a drive-through, going on a tight curve. So we've, we feel we've got very good safety protocols in place to protect the employees.
At the Planning and Zoning Commission, you were asked about alternatives to this, and I didn't hear, I didn't hear a good response in my mind in terms of what, what other methods you potentially consider, and there's one in particular that I, that I've used at other restaurants where you use the app and that you already have. And then you pull into a numbered parking spot, and you enter the app, into the app, you enter their number, and then someone brings the food out to you. To me, it seems like that might be a safer method and wouldn't need, wouldn't require a third lane, and potentially the risk of someone in the middle lane hitting the runner as they're trying to get to the third lane.
Yes, sir. I believe you're, I believe you're describing what's commonly referred to in the industry as curbside pickup, right? You, you show up, you text them at slot number four, and then somebody comes out and brings it to you. So just like a lot of restaurants did, we tested that during the pandemic, and we've actually stopped advertising curbside pickup, and we start putting out, we start putting out and advertising that we're doing curbside pickup because it's very low utilization rate, and in some instances, it's, it's hard to execute very well, to where you, the guest, has a really good experience. So we're doing less of that now. Of course, at Vernon Hills, as you probably know very well, we have four slots there outside, and those today, it looks like they're being used more as like a drive-through overflow when your order's delayed and the person behind you needs to get around, so. It is an alternative that we tested for two years, and we're migrating away from it, just because it's not a very efficient model. We think this is a much more efficient way of doing it, but we did test it for two years, so you're very, you're very correct that it can be done well. We, we don't think it's the best way, though. Hopefully, it's an answer, it's maybe not the one you want to hear.
Yeah, I'm just not convinced. I've certainly used that at other restaurants, and I appreciate the fact that I don't have to wait in a line, first of all. Secondly, God forbid there's an emergency, or I have to go to the bathroom or something, I'm not stuck in the middle of, in the middle lane of 40 cars going around. I can just run inside, go to the bathroom, and get out to my car again before, before the food even gets there. So I'm just not convinced. And, and I was actually just at your restaurant last week, and I ordered from, using the app from inside the restaurant because your line inside was really long, and, and, and I think that's sort of more the way of the future. Now, maybe it hadn't been utilized much in the past just because people weren't aware of it at your restaurant, but perhaps instead of doing this, if you focused on advertising that more, I think it would become utilized more, and, and it would be a viable alternative, and perhaps safer, and less expensive, and not take away from the beauty of the community with having a reduced setback, things like that. Thank you, sir.
And I share the same concerns Trustee Oppenheim expressed, along with the safety of crossing the third lane. I would be willing to have you, you know, put two lanes all the way around, but I can't support three lanes for all the reasons that Planning and Zoning didn't, and I just don't see you pushing the food out that much faster that you would accommodate three lines, because that, you know, you, I think you just wind up with three, and most of the DoorDash, Grubhub, those guys can just jump out of the car and, and run in and get it. They would, I would assume if I was working with them, I would prefer to do that because it's probably going to be quicker, you know, set up, yeah, set up a special lane for them inside or whatever. Yeah, I could support two around, I just can't support three. Trustee, who was first, Takaoka?
Schenck was first.
Schenck, Trustee Schenck.
You can go first.
So I have several questions. First, what does OSHA have to say about three young people outside taking orders in a three-lane exposure outside? Do you guys, have you looked into, because you have safety issues that could be an issue, obviously, what Trustee Oppenheim, Trustee Cook are saying, that's a concern to me, because I'm assuming you have order takers, cashiers, and runners, each lane, you probably have three, so about nine, 10 people outside at once. To me, this looks like you're using that third lane to reduce the stack into the target parking lot, however you want to say it, you know, third-party deliveries, online orders, you're just moving them into that outer lane, assuming that you're full capacity. So how many extra cars are you thinking about adding into your, what, how are you, how much capacity are you increasing an hour here? About another 150 cars an hour, 100 cars an hour, you think?
I don't know exactly, but that sounds.
So are you increasing your capacity in your kitchens, too? Because as, how are you, what is your plan to get this food out? Because all you're going to do is create a three-lane traffic jam, as it is in your parking lot. And when you have a 17-foot setback, as we're driving down. driving down Lakeview, and we're just seeing the stack of cars out there, for you as a business owner, that probably wouldn't, you don't want your customers to see that because they're going to say, well, they're busy, but they're not moving the cars. So are you planning in your future plans for Portillo's to increase your capacity in your kitchens? Staffing is a whole different discussion, which I don't think I'm going to get into, but what, are you adding more windows for pickup for the runners? How do you, because you can't just put another lane in there without, you know, no food, no service is the line in the industry, right? You know, so what is your plan for the future in the kitchens there?
Great question. Thank you. So I'll start with the first one. What does OSHA have to say about it? I don't know what OSHA in particular has to say about it. I just said I've gotten this permitted in three, three different cities and in three different states. So there is a safety review as part of that, and I think we're covered there. I'd have to get back to you on specifically what OSHA might say. Your second question spoke to stacking invisibility on Lakeview. I think we've got, with the retaining wall and the landscaping that's above it, I think we have adequate screening. So you're not going to be, certainly going to be seeing headlights, as Mike mentioned earlier, from the drive-thru. You see the tops of cars probably, tops of pickups probably. The kitchen capacity, it's a very good question. With, we think we could handle it with staffing and just more efficient labor models that we brought on in the past two years that we've learned from. We've learned how to operate kitchens very, with very low staffing levels as the volume went down. But as that volume went down, our drive-thru capacity went up pretty substantially. So we're able to keep up with a pretty, pretty robust drive-thru. As dining rooms start to fill up and drive-thrus start to fill back up, we'll serve that with some of the labor efficiencies that we brought in over the past year. We won't be expanding the kitchen or making it bigger or adding additional windows. We'll just make what's happening inside that kitchen more efficient to step up to the demand as it increases out that window.
What is, what is like, what is your target customer experience time? They pull on the drive-thru line, the time they get their food. Do you guys, how do you guys break that down?
We'd really like you to be able to go in and place an order and pick it up in six minutes.
Six minutes is your time? So pulling in or when I place my order, six minutes?
Once you place your order.
So once you place your order. And are your people, because right now, they don't step far back out of the, into the stack line. They just kind of stay on property, right? When they place, take orders?
The order takers are going to be probably within 15 or 20 feet of that pre-sale board. If they have to, they'll probably migrate outside of the lane to get toward it, but they're probably working from 15 to 20 feet in front of the board, back to the board in that roughly, roughly that area.
Okay. From what I understand, Mike, it's a 50-foot is the zone, 34 is the variance you guys have right now for the setback. You're looking to get the setback to 17, is that what we're looking?
Yeah, 50 is the required buffer, 17.5 is the requested on the west property, and 43.7 on the north instead of 50.
Right, but they have a current variance right now when they put the second lane in.
Current variation allows 38 feet.
Yeah. So if this doesn't work, and that lane doesn't get used, would you pay to restore it back to the original, to two lanes? To reduce that setback? Or increase the setback? Is that something, or you, I mean, that's a long shot?
If the third lane...
If it just doesn't work, if it's not working, whether you have accidents or it's not, I'm just...
Oh, I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't hope that you would ask me to do that, sir.
I'm just curious.
No, sir. I don't think we would be willing to do that.
Trustee Forster?
You mentioned the third lane would be used for third parties like DoorDash, Grubhub, those ideas. Am I correct? Is the current way that's set up right now, where they, those parties pull up right in front at your front spots at this location, and a runner from Portillo's inside comes out and brings it to them?
We did that, we did that for probably about a year. What we're doing now is we've set up, if you've been inside one of the Portillo's dining rooms, there's two sets of red shelving, correct. You've seen it. So there's two sets of red shelving, and you'll go up, whether you order it on your app yourself, if you go to the Portillo's app, and if you ordered it, or you ordered it through Grubhub, or DoorDash, or Uber Eats, whether it's you or them, you would park, and then you would go inside, and you would look for your name. They're labeled by last name alphabetically, and you would look for your name, and you would grab the order off the shelf and then take it out with you. You've already prepaid, so it's more or less on the honor system.
So that's what the DoorDash, Grubhubs, Ubers all do. So was there a problem with the system before, where they just pulled up in front and you guys brought it out?
We didn't find it was very efficient and effective, and it was, it's tough to staff that and know, with the variation in the ebb and flow, it's tough to staff that, to have a runner dedicated to run out and bring it out. I'm not answering your question, am I?
Well, no, you are. And I'm asking because I had DoorDash drivers during the pandemic in my house, and you were the favorite location to go to because the spots were set up, and it was easy, and it was brought to them, and it was seamless.
Oh, good.
So it feels like if you switch to a third lane, are you eliminating that process inside now with the shelving where people come in? Are you trying to eliminate that process and have them all go through the third lane? Or like, what's the, are you offering two opportunities, two ways? What is, it seems like that could be?
Great question. So the shelving, we've had out fleet-wide in all 71 restaurants for about four months.
Yeah.
It's going really well. In some cases, in other cases, it's not going so well. The last time I tested out the online order and go and pick up on the shelf, I asked the young lady behind the counter, because she had it in a hot box behind, it was supposed to be on the shelf, like the app told me, and the email said. I asked her why, she says, "Well, the ribs walk." So she said, she was basically telling me that the shelving isn't very safe and secure at that particular restaurant. So it works well in some places and not so well in others. It's something that we're constantly iterating and responding to, how the guest responds to how we're doing that. I'd say this is probably one of many iterations of that process. We think that this is a really good opportunity to get even more efficient. Will the shelves go away? Maybe, maybe not. In the short term, there, that's how we're going to do it. Will we go back to curbside? Perhaps. Those are really easy things. Those are things that I could change, right? We could put up a sign that says, "Text this number and this order." We can go back to things like that. Putting in a drive-thru and then removing it's a little bit more of a economic investment. It might not pencil. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
So maybe, I think is the answer.
Yeah.
Trustee Taco.
Okay, so hypothetically, let's say you were approved. What's like, what's the timeline? Is this like an immediate thing, or for just planning for the future, maybe two years, three years? What's...
Yes, sir. If approved, we would go through the permitting process. Having done the due diligence, you have to see what that's like here in this municipality, but we would go through the design and the permitting process, and then we would budget in the fiscal year appropriate.
It'd be an immediate thing?
What's that?
If you were approved this year, you'd want to be up and running next year?
No, our fiscal year is our calendar year. It's not budgeted for this year. It'd be something we'd program in '23 or beyond.
Okay. So if you, if approved, it's definitely something you're doing?
If approved, it's definitely something we would put through the permitting process.
All right. That's my first question. And then Dave Brown, what's your take on this as far as, I'd love your opinion.
Thank you. I guess what I'm looking at is more, I'll touch more on the road program and how that impacts Portillo's and the other ownerships. So what we're doing along for the Lakeview and Route 60 project is we're really improving the north-south Lakeview areas. We're adding an additional southbound lane. We're adding an additional northbound lane. When you get to Hawthorne, we're putting dual lefts that are currently single. There's a capacity issue at Hawthorne Parkway. We don't want it backing up onto 60. That is why we're requesting right-of-way. There is a, Mr. Stordel, if you could flip to the next slide. So looking at the different corners, the northwest corner, northeast corner, and Portillo's, pretty much all of them were asking for between eight and a half and 11 feet. So there's right-of-way asks for all of those corners. And in terms of the actual impact, with the right-of-way request, Portillo's will have 17 and a half feet dimension. Wendy's after this is only going to be 13 and a half. When we get to the northwest corner, Trustee Cook would probably call it the Turner Building, nine and a half feet. So in terms of impacts and landscape buffer, Portillo's after the right-of-way and the third lane would be wider in terms of buffer than the north side of Route 60. I think the one conversation that I've heard is, well, the lights of vehicles when you're circulating, that was one of the concerns. I think that part could probably be resolved by either the height of the landscape wall or additional landscaping. Those are my thoughts.
Would you oppose something like this? I mean, I want...
This screening?
No, I'm talking, yeah, I mean, what he's, I'm asking...
Would I oppose this?
Yeah, I mean, is this something that is, I mean, P&amp;Z, as far as I'm, it was a three to three. It's three and three, so...
Personally, I would not oppose it.
Okay.
But I don't vote either.
I understand. I understand. Now, based upon what he had said about elevating the landscaping and making it, is that something you would have no issue doing?
Absolutely. If we needed to raise landscaping to an elevation that made the village more comfortable with the view from Lakeview, absolutely would do.
Okay. Well, then as far as I'm, my opinion, I would support it. If, you know, again, I'm, I'm, that's why I wanted Dave Brown's opinion, because quite frankly, with all that other, you know, construction going on, he's who I'm going to, you know, base my decision on. So and if you're willing to do what Dave Brown, you know, would suggest to help offset some of these other, you know, pushbacks, then, you know, I would, I would support it. Because as, you know, Portillo's is absolutely a big, you know, business, so to speak. They're, you know, taxing entities, you know, and I'm here, I'm here to support. As Mr. Markward had said before, I'm here to support...
This is going to be one of the few times in 20-some years I'm going to disagree with Mr. Brown, just for the reasons I said earlier, including the aesthetics, the safety, the fact that I just don't, I just don't see you pushing the food out that much faster that you need a third lane. And I just, yeah, I can't, I can't...
So from a safety, you're saying runners coming from Portillo's?
Going across three lanes, and you got...
Right.
Yeah, your order takers are going to be going across three lanes.
Right. So here's the thing, with liability?
Deliverers are going to be going three lanes.
I can assure you, from a liability side, an entity like Portillo's now, who's owned by a private equity situation, isn't going to put any increased liability. They got way more exposure now.
No, I understand, but it's all of the above.
Oh, no, no, I get it. I get what you're saying. So here's the thing. I've seen, the whole thing about having order takers outside is somewhat new here. If you go out west, okay, there's a couple, you've heard In-N-Out Burger, right? You got people all over it. And I'll tell you what, as far as lines, it's like almost going into the street, okay? There's a coffee entity out there called Dutch Brothers. It's the same thing. They've got order takers out there. They've got lines just totally. And I respect his opinion absolutely. He owns a fast, you know, he has, he understands it way more than I do.
Do any McDonald's have three lanes? I don't know of any that do two.
I don't know of any.
But then again, I don't know, does this set a precedent? Because, you know, Chick-fil-A's very busy, but I don't think there's really any room for them to expand.
Well, they were also ones that, again, two lanes, and it, you know, and they work efficiently.
Sure.
And the In-N-Outs have been to have been two, mostly two lanes. Yeah, yeah.
Not that this really pertains to it, but the automobile business, you go to the auction. There were five lanes. Metro has over 17 lanes. I purchase cars. You have to go in one lane, then you have to go another, and sometimes they're running. You've got cars running, and there's people all around them. So I, I'm familiar with saying where, if you have three lanes, I've been where there's been a lot of lanes, and I've had to go from one spot to another. Haven't seen anybody hit yet. Now, I've been out of that business, but I did purchase cars in the auction aspect, and you have lanes that are going, and you have buyers, sellers, and you have a lot of commotion going on, and no one's been hitting those. Now, they're not going 100 miles an hour, but they are moving because each car goes in, it goes back out, and the next guy's going through, upper to bottom.
But who's driving those cars?
You have a porter that's driving a car through there, and then you have people that are buying, that are bidding on the particular car.
Not somebody who just got their food and is in a hurry to get out?
With the minivan of kids who are screaming and the fries fall.
Well, that's it. You've got people screaming all over the line.
No, but it's different.
The auctioneer going...
Apples and oranges.
Maybe in the winter time is early when that becomes...
Yeah.
Correct. We have severe weather protocols where we're taking that into account and protecting employees.
How come you don't have menu boards to order from, other than the one that's there? Why don't you have menu boards, like where the order takers are?
We have, in a lot of places, we have the pre-sale. We're actually on the cusp of a digital menu board rollout as well.
Will they be able to take orders at the menu board remotely?
I believe we're, we're going to stick with the order taker. We feel you have a better experience when you're talking to a person as opposed to a squawk box.
How do you, so currently you go from two down to one, right? That's the current setup?
We have the ability to...
Two lanes, you merge down to one before, like your cash window right there. And then, and then sometimes they just say, "Go park in spot number one, number two, we'll bring your food out to you." And there's knee grass. We can get out, right, to the right. So now, how do you account for that if you're the inner lane and you can't get out? Or you get your food and the guy in front of you is still waiting for food because he can't get out. I'm not going to tell you how to run your business. You can't really...
Right. I believe that's what Mr. Oppenheim was describing.
I can't, yeah, that's not our job. I just, my concern is, right now, one car more or less leaves that line at a time at the end, right? So you could potentially have three cars all leaving at once, too. So you're just kind of, like I said, my original plan, my original opinion is you're putting this lane is to reduce that stack, to reduce that perception of being, well, I don't want to, I'll be honest with you, I see 20 cars in that line in the Target, I don't pull in. If I don't see, you know, if I come around the building, I'm going to pull in. Oh.
Right. But that usually only happens when only one lane is open.
Either, well, or it's super busy.
That's been my experience. It's never backed up.
Sure, but it's still the same number of cars, though.
Where I've been at, about even with the Target door, which I have been willing to wait in line to get, it's been just one lane. I have never seen that with, when the two lanes are running.
We'd have to, we would have to operate that very well to prevent what Mr. Oppenheim and what you, Mr. Shank, described where you're trapped in the middle lane, because the OLO lane is blocked up because we're not delivering food fast enough so that those guests can exit. That's something we'd have to...
And Trustee Forster's point with the third party, the delivery, if they're using that outer lane for delivery and they get stuck in there, they're not going to do that. They want to do what the original was, right, where they would go in and pick up the food? Now, I mean, or if somebody comes out, runs. So in Madison, well, which one is the one that's running like well right now? You have two or three?
We have one in West Madison, Wisconsin, where it's exactly like what we're describing here, where it's a full-size Portillo's, full dining room, hand-drive-thru. That's been open since November. We, it's a little bit slow. We opened up in the winter. It's just coming into spring, just coming out of the pandemic. It's a little bit slow in West Madison, Wisconsin.
Is it a new restaurant, or you just added?
It's brand-new. I just opened that one.
Everything is new, and you opened with a three-lane drive-thru, correct?
Yes, sir.
And Joliet wants no indoor dining.
Joliet's correct. Portillo's pickup only, three lanes. We opened, I believe, January, February 2nd.
That'd be pickup only.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We have, we have a vestibule on the south side where you could park, the way Mrs. Forster was describing, or Trustee Forster, sorry, where you could park and walk into a vestibule, a guest-facing vestibule, and then we have the same red shelving that you'd see in Vernon Hills, and you can pick that up and leave. We're testing that out right now, the pickup only. We don't have any current plans to build any additional. Those are our three exist, are two existing triple lanes. We're fully permitted and about to break ground on June 13th in Sherrville, Indiana, and it's a three-lane drive-thru. And it is absolutely to reduce stacking in that particular lot. We only have one way in and out on the north side. So when you enter and leave the drive-thru or leave the parking lot, you have to go out the same way you came in. So we needed that third lane to help with stacking. And here, it's a little bit different. Of course, we're going to execute that as the OLO lane.
What do you call it?
The, I'm sorry, OLO, online ordering.
Okay.
We're going to operate that as the OLO lane and advertise that as the OLO lane. If you're, if you're coming to pick up something you ordered online, then, or an online order, then you would go to that third lane. I may be rambling at this point.
And then, will you have an employee standing there verifying that someone ordered online? Or they have to show their phone? How is that?
It's a really good question.
How's that work? How's it enforced? Who's...
It's a really good, I don't, I don't know the answer to that one. Sorry.
How many OLOS do you do? I got to use it. How many OLOS do you do an hour, would you say?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
A rough, percentage-wise?
We're right now about, fleet-wide, about 60%, a combination of drive-thru and OLO as opposed to dine-in. And that varies, that varies pretty widely, you know, nationwide. But on average, system average, is about 60% where you're specifically coming to take it away and eat it somewhere else, or somebody's doing that on your behalf. or somebody's doing that on your behalf. And a portion of that is order, online ordering. But, you know, most of that is coming through the drive-through right now. So we think we can expand the online ordering component by doing things like this. And, and the shelving and the pickup, and we've tried it all. We're probably not gonna stop innovating in that.
And the curbside.
Sorry?
And the curbside.
And curbside. Curbside, we may go back to that.
I need trustee, trustee Forster.
I'm not giving up.
We're not, we haven't stopped curbside, we just stopped advertising curbside. We think there's a situation where there's a guest who's gonna need curbside and we're available for that, to them. But we're not advertising it anymore, we're not putting up the placards anymore, saying, please come here for curbside.
As we're talking about this, I'm wondering about Chicago and seasonality of the, and usage of this third lane, because I have been to Portillo's when it has been freezing, and rightly so, your staff is not outside, and you end up ordering at the, the window, the, the, I don't know what to call it, the order menu area, and then you drive up to the when you, window, and there aren't staff out there because of, I'm guessing what you refer to as weather protocol.
Extreme weather, below a certain temperature, too many, too much wind, or whatever.
So that's making me wonder the usage of this third lane, because in those situations, I've been there in the winter, and it is one lane because you're going up like a normal drive-through, ordering and doing that. So, is this a seasonal situation you're talking about that this would be used? Because if you're watching weather protocol and having your staff inside, are we talking about a situation that's only gonna be used eight months of the year?
I would say that you're, you're absolutely right, that there, when there's extreme weather and it, and it's not safe for our employees to be outside, we would close down the lanes that are not needed or in use.
Right.
So.
It's like you're saying, extremely cold or like snow, cause it's, there's twelve inches of snow.
Well, either.
It's shocking, extremely cold.
Either. I'm just, when, when it's not gonna be used, there's times where it's not cleaned and it's over, you know, it needs to be plowed, or they're not gonna put, you know, their staff out there to.
So, let's say there's only five cars in the, in the lane going through the drive-through, but everyone doing Uber Eats and all that, they'll still use the third lane? Is that dedicated only, even if there's?
Because.
No line?
I believe there'd be situations where that's correct, yes. Where you wouldn't need the third lane because you just don't have the throughput. Like, when I went through this evening, there was one car in front of me, they probably wouldn't need the third lane this evening when I went through.
So it's not just for like Uber Eats then? Cause to me, I thought you.
It's not an express lane for them at all.
Yeah, sort of like an express, that's where all the Uber Eats and the.
Right. We would have the ability to, to surge on that as we need it. But there, I imagine there's situations, when it was trying to convey, there are situations where what you described would happen, cause we wouldn't have the throughput. You could see there's nobody, there's nobody coming, we just don't need that lane.
And like the, the Uber Eats, if that third lane is for that situation as well as overflow regular customers, right? That's what you're saying? Or have I misunderstood that?
Could you ask that again?
The, the third lane you're gonna use for Uber Eats, DoorDash, et cetera, as well as regular customers should, need exist.
Well, no, I think Mr. Oppenheimer's right, that if we did that, then we wouldn't have that available to your DoorDash driver, because we blocked it with, well, me.
That's what, okay.
We, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that. Um, but, but I, but I should also mention to Mr. Takayoka's question, you know, what's happening inside is that as these orders are coming in, we, we know it, right? We're getting tickets. So we, we know when your third-party delivery driver is coming. We know when you've ordered by the app, because the Olo tickets are running on the inside. So, we, we can staff up or down, shut that lane up, on or off, as we need to, um, with our order takers and our runners, because we know what's coming. So when we get a bunch of online orders, we can see that this is about to be a problem, we can send people outside to adapt to that. The runners, really, cause that order's already been taken. It's not the order takers, really, that's executing this third lane.
Yeah. I, I struggle on this one, because I, 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 I don't know what problem we're solving.
Mm-hmm.
Quite yet.
I don't have a problem with the setback rule, the seventeen, the eventual seventeen foot, because as Dave Brown says, you're gonna mitigate it with landscaping, maybe a berm or something to keep those headlights below, right? The vis, on the Lakeview.
Do you know what our, our elevation difference is from the drive-through to the top of the berm?
Um, right now, it's about anywhere from two and a half to four feet or so.
Okay.
Um, but with seventeen feet of landscaping, there's plenty of space to be able to go up.
To make it happen.
Couple feet, put some more dense landscaping, raise the height of the wall even to provide more screening in addition to the actual rating function of it. There's plenty of options that can be solved or designed.
So you have three lanes, but now, what do you do with like larger, like landscape trucks and trucks that go through there and make that turn? I mean, engineering probably figured out those turn radiuses, right? I don't know what.
What size truck, truck do we usually run through? I think we typically run a fifty-three foot truck through on the auto terms.
What's a standard, like, pickup truck?
Um, you know, mine's got a six and a half foot bed and maybe six feet, I mean, it's, we're probably talking fifteen, eighteen.
So like a truck with a trailer, maybe, like with landscape? All I'm saying is that, I just don't wanna get you, I look at, you can have three lanes, but eventually you might just have two really wide lanes over time if it doesn't work, but.
This is under the assumption of traffic increases, because if things remain at the center, like, I guess, maybe you got two.
Right.
Double wide lanes.
More concrete.
So it's almost like, is that, is that the bet here? That you're gonna increase business twenty percent?
Absolutely. That our, that our off-premise dining is gonna continue to increase, that is the bet.
Your off-premise, oh, so take out, take home.
Off-premise as opposed to on, it's like dine, dine-in or off-premise. That's the word, a phrase I was struggling for earlier, the omnibus phrase for all of that stuff where you take it and eat it somewhere else, is the off-premise side.
Yeah, yeah.
Sixty-five over, seventy percent for drive-through.
What was your, what was your drive-through percentage before COVID?
I mean, it's.
Um.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I heard a voice. Oh, sorry.
Yeah. What was your drive-through percentage before COVID?
I, I, it was less than sixty percent. I don't, I don't know, I don't remember. I'm the construction guy.
So what kinda, what kinda cost is this, like, for you guys? What kinda capital investment is this?
When I do this, uh, with new store construction, brand new, we're just, we're breaking ground anyway, the concrete portion of this is about an additional twenty thousand dollars to do what we're describing here with removing all the landscaping. I don't think, did we run an EOPC on this one yet?
We have.
Not yet. So, I mean, it's under, it's probably a hundred, a hundred and fifty K-ish. So it's a sizable investment, and we think, we think we're gonna, we, we think it's worth it, but obviously we, the village has to be happy with it.
I mean, I guess all our concerns about, you know, the runners getting hit, that's under assumption this, you know, their business blows up twenty percent. Cause if it doesn't, then it's just, well, you've got two wider lanes as far as I'm concerned, right? I mean, if they're willing to spend the money, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, but if they do end up with three lanes, then we're back to the concern, that, and that's.
Huh?
If they do need the three lanes, then we've got the safety issue.
If they do need the three lanes, that's total spec, I mean, that's speculative.
Well, the whole thing's speculative, that's, that's the issue right now.
So that's the thing, I mean, do I.
So what, why, I haven't, I haven't.
Still don't see how it's gonna speed up the food processing, so, but.
But if they wanna do it, and it does, to me, if it, with, with what David said with Lakeview Parkway and all that, and it doesn't come to fruition, then to me, it doesn't, it's not really.
I, I don't, I don't care so much either about the seventeen feet, that's not, that's not the concern. The concern to me is, is.
The volume potential increase?
Well, are, are we potentially causing a problem here? Is there a safety issue that, that they haven't experienced yet, but still might be a potential issue? And is there really a need for this to justify that?
And all three lanes, all three lanes are going to have to exit into one lane.
Well, yeah, that, that goes without saying, right? There's only one window.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so all three are gonna have to exit into, all three are gonna have to exit into one lane that is also an inbound lane for traffic that's parking in that.
May I address that point?
Yeah.
Can you pull up, can you back up a slide or two? Um, I'd like to show it as opposed to describe it. Um, I believe it's page, uh, it's sheet A1 dot zero of our supplemental. Um, that, that one will do.
This one, okay.
Sorry, yes, sir.
C1?
C, C1 will show it too. So, we, we start with three lanes and, and what we're proposing and end with three lanes.
Correct.
Okay.
And then, and then, no, no, and then all three lanes turn out into one lane.
Into the driveline.
Right.
Yes, sir.
A single lane.
So the, so the one that's closest to the store is trying to turn right with the car to the right.
Turning right.
Turning right, along with another car to their right.
Yeah.
Turning right, all at the same time.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Confusing and.
Yeah.
Potentially dangerous.
That's part of my problem with it.
And you can't predict who's in what lane and which way they wanna turn. They can't plan what lane they go in at the end so that they're set up in the.
Majority are gonna wanna turn right. You'll occasionally have somebody wanting to go left, but not very often.
The middle lane might even turn left and they'll be crossing traffic or the one.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it seems like there, there would need to be more of a, of a change to the entire parking lot.
Yeah, cause.
To, to make it safe.
Cause of that fact that they have to immediately turn when they end those lanes is another problem, so. Uh, any other new comments or questions, or should we?
That's what I said, okay.
Um, counselor, the vote required since it was, it failed at P and Z.
Right. The, the vote at P and Z was a, it's a failure, that's not a vote in favor. And we've heard a lot of comments tonight. I, what I would suggest is you take a consensus of the board to get a sense of whether there's support or not for the project. Based on that consensus, we can then formulate a motion.
Okay.
Can, can I add, ask one more thing? And I really, this is kinda like a hobby of mine. Um, if, it's kinda more for everyone, if, if you put the three lanes in, your goal is to increase your business, right? Your sales volume, there's no doubt about it.
Right.
If you can't, if you put three lanes in, it's not working, you're gonna have to figure out how to fix it, right? That's on you, that's not on, if we approve it hypothetically, and it doesn't work, you're gonna have to figure out ways to make it work.
Absolutely.
So, my opinion is, I have no problem with the setback, and you gotta make sure your, the safety issue is in place. But like I said, you're either gonna have three lanes or two really wide lanes, eventually.
And, and the two wide lanes would be okay, because again, one of my other concerns is as they're leaving the lanes, having to then.
Well, that could come to fruition, because again, you're under the, we're under, you know, I get the safety thing, but yeah, sure, and so business increased twenty-five percent, well, yeah, then it.
So we'll do a consensus.
Let's do a consensus.
Uh, trustee Forster?
Uh, not in favor.
Trustee Oppenheimer?
As much as I support Portillo's, I needed Portillo's, I think, three times in the past two weeks, but, um, I have to vote no.
Yeah, and as often as I go there and sit in those lines, I have to vote no as well.
Uh, I vote yes, because in the favor of the, even with the third lane, uh, and things don't work, don't, don't like to say it this way, but it's your dime.
Right.
I, I, I think with all the setbacks, everything, it's, you're, you're pulling the trigger on it, so I'm, I'm voting yes.
Yeah, I, I'm with, I'm with trustee Markward on that, and, you know, as trustee Shank alluded to, it's either three lanes, cause business has increased, and/or maybe two extra wide lanes, so I'm in favor.
I've been going back and forth on this. I mean, I listen to the P and Z, everybody's thoughts, you know, I'm gonna, I'm in favor, cause the setback doesn't bother me, and I think you guys, I think you guys will fi, either figure it out or adapt. You know, it's, it's your dime, it's your money putting in there. And we wanna see your businesses grow for many reasons, so.
So I think we have to stay all night until we get a four to two, keep going around.
I'm gonna say one thing, then. Here's the thing. We have a trustee, because I'll be honest with you, I get, I, you know, I have opinions on a lot of things in life, that's, but when I'm here.
I'll attest to that.
But, I just, you know, no, hey, what, we can't, we can't?
Yeah.
No, I'm not gonna, no, I'm not gonna, you don't, I'm not looking for a response. Look, I make decisions here based upon people that have an experience, have subject matter expertise, okay? Um, opinions are great, I get it, they're vi, they're absolutely justifiable, everyone has their position. I always go to Dave Brown, I always go to someone on staff, no question about it, but quite honestly, you know, if, if you have someone with experience in the business, who understands the business, and someone supports something that's in the business, then, you know what, to me, that even just, you know, sort of validates my decision as well. And, and I, and I think we have someone, as we all know, within the business who asks questions that we're definitely, someone who came up here wouldn't necessarily expect, and.
Well, that's why McDonald's only has two. Dave, one question for you, speaking about your expertise. Um, having been on the traffic advisory committee and having been, traffic has been a major part of my life, um, what do you think a traffic engineer would think about these three, this whole three-lane process?
I think it's.
And, and might that not be something we might wanna get them to have a traffic engineer look at, addressing some of our concerns?
So, um, looking at what the request is, the request is really for the variance of the landscape buffer and the conditions that were reviewed by Planning and Zoning Commission. Item number two, final engineering is subject to review and approval by the village engineer prior to issuance of a building permit. So, I think one thing that is being discussed is really the landscape buffer variance, in terms of how operationally that they can a, address this. I wonder if everyone is getting their food all at the same time, or if one person is being handed their, their food, that person's leaving, then the next, and then the next. Um, I agree in terms of the exiting, that that's something that needs to be discussed further, and I think the condition number two, uh, is for additional discussions on that, in terms of how that might be able to be modified, talking to Portillo's in terms of what works and what doesn't. Maybe they have some operational, uh, a staff person that's helping with what vehicle is exiting. Um, but I think that is a very valid point. The one thing I would also add is, I don't know what new normal is anymore, right? Um, with COVID, I see, when I go through Portillo's, um, is the, the lines are shorter. What I do remember prior to COVID is how they put cones out all the way across, and it, you, I don't know, it used to be Wolf Camera, I don't know what's there right now, but it would go many, many stalls. You'd have to go in front of Target before you can loop back in. So I think it is impactful to other ownership east of there, and I think one of the things, if they can improve their capacity or stacking, it moves people off of backing up into those other lanes. But I think to your specific point, I think we do have to look at the exiting part of it, but I think that's one of the conditions that Planning and Zoning Commission added. And the other thing I would say is, we don't disagree very often, but I think both of us would vote in favor of the lemon cake.
I don't know, I, I, I vote chocolate over lemon.
It's a tough competition, but I, I would recommend the lemon cake.
No, you're, you're just wrong.
Yeah, the chocolate, yeah, yeah. So that's second disagreement tonight, David.
I mean, what if they rolled it down to a two lanes, full, like you said, all the way around? Would you be more in favor of two lanes all the way around?
Except two.
Versus no merge point, just two lanes all the way around?
And, and I.
Or three to a two.
Since, who would you have look into that from a traffic standpoint? The staff or, I mean, cause you guys are real good at traffic.
They certainly have, uh, they're experts, we would work with them, but, um, uh, we would have civil tech engineering, who is both working on the Lakeview widening project, and they also help us with other traffic engineering reviews, and we would bring them in.
So, so would we get another go-around at this then, after you did your, your due diligence?
Yeah, when it came back to board, we would have a second, yeah, if it came back to board.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. If they are unable to work through item number two, village engineer approval, if I'm not comfortable with the resolution of the three exiting, then that needs to be brought back before the board. I, I just want to make sure our attorney concurs with that.
Well, but you want to say something?
Yeah, we, we could be even more specific, if we could, you know, under the condition right now that's requires review and approval by the village engineer, that's where Dave would ask for a traffic study. We could just add another condition on there at the direction of the board, saying that they're required to produce a traffic study, uh, that demonstrates safe exiting, uh, from the three southbound lanes. And then we get that review and, and, uh, and, and our consultant reviews the traffic study, and, uh, and then a determination is made at that time. If, if they can't demonstrate safe exiting for those three lanes, uh, then they wouldn't comply with that condition of the ordinance, and we would be back in front of you guys.
Is there a way to point up there with a, something? Or, or, see where it says twenty-two, twenty-two?
No, I, I was just gonna say, uh, I. I will, I would, I would not have a problem.
Okay, thank you, David.
Agreeing to it at this level and then.
At two lanes?
No, e, even, even the three with the, the caveats that.
The traffic study?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, like, if you went down to two lanes, you just made this area here your third-party order delivery pickup and your order online.
Yeah, that's the area where they have the, some stacking now for people whose orders take a little bit longer to get them out of the queue line, so. Yeah. Yeah, I have absolutely no problem with two lanes all the way around the building. It's the third lane that bothers me.
Do you have any that are two lanes all the way around versus the two merge into one right now?
Yes.
Two lanes all the way around?
How many, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but, but we do.
And how does that work? Now, I mean, I know how physical work, how is it working out?
We do, just like you've seen at Vernon Hills where they, they, tonight, if you were to Vernon Hills, the cones are probably in the first third of the drive-through, so most people that were going through this evening around six o'clock were only going through the inside lane.
Yeah.
But we would use that same technique, and those cones would just move where they needed to, to meet with the surge of the.
Right, but we're, Vernon Hills, you're, you can go up to two, but then you merge after you order down to one.
Right, a lot of them will, will start and end at two, and we, we'll use cones as needed to, to control the traffic. So the, the runners will control the traffic flow and move cones as they need to at the direction of the management.
Well, I was gonna say, trustee Takaoka raises a good point, and, and I, I would trust that by the time it's been reviewed to that, that point, that those concerns would be clear, but I still really would much prefer just two lanes. But to allow the process to move on and not stall here, I would be, be willing to. Because, because eventually it has to come back to board level anyway.
Right, this is not a final decision.
Right.
Exactly, that's all it is, and Dave, you know, he's not saying it's fine, we're gonna.
I, 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 I like the conversation, and I think we're, I'm at a deficit is, I'd really like to hear from their operation people on, maybe they have better ideas than what I can come up with.
Okay.
That's a great call.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We just want a chance to be able to pursue it, and let, and let them do what they do, and then it'll come back.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you know what, at a minimum, I think we owe it to them. We owe it to them.
No, I'm, I'm willing to compromise to that point, yeah.
Magnitude, and that's all it is, Dr. Oppenheimer.
Now, that's not telling you, I'm gonna still say that at, at the next level.
It's gonna have the people do their due diligence, what they do.
And that, and that, I, I guess, if, if, if we say, sure, you can go ahead, and we're demanding that they get a traffic engineer to verify that it's gonna be safe, and then, and then at that point, they'll come back to us, and they'll say, yes, we believe it's safe because of X, Y, Z, then, then that's fine, but if, but, yeah, they weren't, they weren't asking for that originally, they were just asking us to, to prove it.
That's why we have the dialogue and everyone's.
To prove it. Right.
It all comes out, and it's like, okay.
Okay, so what do we need in the way of a motion?
I, 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 I can do it, so what I would suggest is a motion to direct staff to draft an ordinance approving the, uh, the relief requested with the additional conditions of traffic study being required, as well as additional landscaping to screen, uh, the drive-through. And we will present, we'll prepare that ordinance for an upcoming meeting, that's when the final vote will take place. That can go, be positive or negative, but at least we'll have it in one document, and you will make a final decision as a village board. The committee of the whole does not make final decisions on zoning dockets, so that's, I think that's the proper motion at this point.
Okay.
And the conditions outlined by.
Oh, it, those were in addition to what has been presented in the packet.
Right, okay.
So, and then I'll add on to that, so the motion's going to approve an amendment to the special use permit, uh, amending ordinance two thousand eight dash oh five nine, allowing the third drive-through lane, and approval to amend the site plan, landscape plan, and architectural drawings related to the garbage enclosure, subject to the extra conditions that were outlined by the village attorney.
Okay.
Can I ask, uh, attorney Farolot, so this seems, still seems different than what we do normally. We don't normally approve a motion at this level, we usually just, you have your talk, and we say that's just contingent upon.
Well, that's only if it's a concept, this is, this is, yes, this is an amend.
We do do a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for concept approval, that's strictly a consensus. The motion is direction, and we have done that at the committee of the whole level, when we, when we have a, a document coming from P and Z. That's been, that's been the problem.
This is changing something that's already existing.
Changing something that already exists, even though it's still.
As opposed to.
Somewhat conceptual in terms of.
Yeah, yeah.
Somewhat conceptual in terms of how it will end up looking.
Yeah, because what you have is a petitioner that is seeking zoning relief, and they're entitled to a final decision, because that final decision can be reviewed at the circuit court level. You just can't ho, hold that decision hostage unless they agree to withdraw it, pull it, send it back to P and Z. So we're at a point now where it's gone through a public hearing, through planning and zoning, negative recommendation essentially. Now, you're at the village, uh, the committee of the whole level, you've debated it, we have to posture it now to get it up to the village board with an ordinance that's either gonna be voted up or down. Now, we formulated additional conditions that hopefully satisfy everybody. Ultimately, you know, you'll make a final decision, whether that's in two weeks or a month from now.
But doesn't, doesn't it still have to go, it's gotta go through their engineers first before it would come back to the, right to the village board?
I'm not sure I understood that completely, I, I, I understood what you're saying was a, a, a study would have to be done, and, and there'd be a condition in the ordinance that in order for it to be, to go forward, the engineers would have to approve it.
Well, and coming out of P and Z, it already had number two was final engineering is subject to review and approval by the village engineer.
And then just to be, just to be even clearer, we had had an additional condition saying that they'd have to provide a traffic study, it'd be subject to review and approval by the village engineer. There's also, uh, and that, and if that, if that traffic study necessitated site plan changes, and I think this gets at your question, trustee Oppenheimer, there's another condition in, in the, that's recommended, that says it has to be in accordance with the site plan that's in front of you, it has a specific date and such, and that's the site plan you're looking at right now. If the traffic study came in after it was approved by the board, let's say at the next meeting, and if the traffic study necessitated site plan changes, we would have to come back to the board to have you approve those amendments. If the traffic study didn't require site amendments, then we're all set, they've proven themselves out, it's safe, we can go forward through the permit process. Does that help answer your question?
So, so who are the engineers that are going to determine this? You said Civil Tech would potentially be that, or?
Dave would be, well.
Ultimately, it would be me, and I would rely heavily on my traffic engineer, Civil Tech.
And the, and coming out of P and Z, there was also the sub, the condition, another condition of approval was, uh, approval of the landscape by the village landscape technician, and, uh, uh, he may require other, and he, he may make changes to the landscaping plan, so.
Yes, sir.
Because that was already in it. All right, so.
You already, you already seem not to be so concerned about the, the right turn, so you would just be basically asking the Civil Tech person if they were concerned? I, I guess I'm not, I'm not following it, because.
Can you hear me? It's working good. So specifically where I'm at is, I'd like to learn operationally, are there steps that the, the business takes to try to mitigate the, the three exiting? Do people get their orders at a different time? Is there some employee that is helping with directing who leaves at what, uh, what time? I'd like to hear, I don't know the answers to that, I'd like to learn from them operationally, are there some solutions to this? And with that information, I think it's a little bit of an iterative process between them and myself to learn about that and bringing in our consultant. Ultimately, it would be my recommendation to the board, and if I don't feel comfortable with that, then I would not recommend in favor of it.
Okay, so can, uh, we, somebody want to make a motion that, do you want to repeat what?
Well, as articulated, uh, by director Atkinson, I believe.
So it'd be a motion amending the special use permit, specifically ordinance two thousand eight dash oh five nine, approving a third drive-through lane, and also a motion, and also approving, uh, an amendment to the site plan, landscape plan, and architectural plans pertaining to the garbage enclosure with an, with two added conditions, uh, one, that a traffic study, uh, be, uh, submitted to the village engineer for review and approval, and that additional landscaping, uh, be placed on top of the berm to further screen the drive-through lane from the adjacent right away.
And this, and the conditions that were already in the.
And then also including the conditions that are outlined in your packet, thank you.
I think what you have to keep in mind, trustee Oppenheimer, is that until, until the, our village engineer approves this, this will not be permitted, permits will not be issued. So the ordinance contains the conditions, the conditions all have to be met in order for the project to move forward, which would include permitting from community development. So there, there is, there are protections.
So, but we're still gonna hear back, we're still gonna be able to vote on it once again after, after we get.
Well, yeah, it would have to come back to board anyway.
If it even gets that far, maybe.
Correct. Get the traffic study.
Yeah, it has to come back to board anyway.
It may not even get there.
Well, that, that, I'm, I'm not sure that's the plan, I think the plan would be the ordinance comes forward with the conditions, you vote on the ordinance, which.
Well, it would, it would come back, it would come back, uh, under, under omnibus anyway, it has to come back.
We can bring in under new business if you wanted to.
No, but I mean, it would, it still has to come back to board level at some point.
A hundred percent, but the question is, is it gonna come back before or after the engineers have spoken? And, and my sense is it would come back before. Well, before, the condition would be that the engineers have to approve, and then permitting would, would follow from that. Because you're gonna, it's, it's gonna get delayed quite a bit, I think, right, Dave?
Well, he was talking, they didn't want to do it till next year anyway, so.
Right, it's not an issue, but.
Yeah.
I don't think it's time-sensitive, but I do think that, uh, we owe you more answers. If we get the information, there's many mechanisms, if it doesn't come directly back to the board, we can share it, uh, via transmittal, we can bring it back, uh, under new business.
Well, that, that's just the timing, uh, through the manager's office.
Right.
We can decide when, when the.
And, and, uh, as a petitioner, you're not, you're not in a real rush to get this, since you said it's not until next year's budget anyway?
No, sir, it, it's been a real honor to, to talk to you folks, but no, the, um, this is not a time-sensitive project, the opportunity arose with some potential to partner with the village on a traffic project you're already working on, so, no, sir, thank you.
All right. Yeah, yeah, but I wanted to make sure he was okay with it.
Why, why do we have to, why do we have to vote on it then, versus sending it back and saying?
Now, that's standard procedure, we vote on it at this level, and, yeah, we vote on it at this level.
There's no final decision being made here, it's just to, to draft an ordinance for you to vote on, I guess at some point, the point is gonna be now after the engineers have.
Yeah.
Done the studies. So we have to prepare that legislation for you as a board to, to deliberate and vote on. We take that direction tonight based on the motion, we will prepare it, and the timing of when it comes before you will be determined by the, by the manager, but it sounds like the direction is that should come before you after the studies are done.
Information.
And after our village engineer has reviewed it, can talk in detail about it, so it won't be at the next meeting, but it'll, it'll be when everything's completed. The study is completed, and the review has been completed, and staff is prepared to make a recommendation.
Okay, so is there a motion to that extent?
Motion to that extent.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, it's, it's always been one of the famous phrases, I motion what he said, you know, it's like, yeah.
Mike articulated the motion.
Yeah, so we have a.
That's the motion.
Yeah.
You're right, though.
We have a motion to second of what he said, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Before we vote, would Portillo's be open, if, if it doesn't pass down the road, would you be just open to doing two lanes all around? That investment?
I'd certainly be work, working to, willing to work with Mr. Brown and his staff on what that would look like.
Figure out something, yeah.
I haven't completely visualized what the intent was of describing the two lane, but I'm, I'm sure through Mr. Brown, we could figure that out. So we certainly want to work with the village.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good plan B, if the traffic study doesn't pan out.
Right.
Going to a two lane is a, is a, is a reasonable plan B, yes.
You're gonna increase your capacity with two lanes all the way around, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, no, roll call, please.
Trustee Forrester? Aye. Markort?
Aye.
Shank?
Aye.
Oppenheimer?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else? There's nothing to come before us, correct? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole?
So may.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're done.
Oh, they're a mess. No, I, I, well, I just kick them because I'm used to.